Please take your seats in the chamber. I want to welcome all of the citizens of the city of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council to our Portsmouth City Council meeting. Thank you all for coming. Council members, please stand for the moment of silence and everyone else in the chamber and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle. Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on July 26, 2022, and a regular meeting on July 26, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I would like for the minutes for our July 26 meeting to be amended on my comments of voting no on the closed session certification for it to reflect that my no vote also reflected the fact that I did not think that discussing the death of a city jail inmate in closed session was appropriate. And I would ask that be amended to the minutes.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Are you, have you taken note of that?
I have noted that, sir.
Okay. And it has, it has been, been handled correctly?
We have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes with the addition of the statement by Dr. Whitaker adding to his statement from the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have now come to, to the item on our agenda, public hearings. Item 22-238, item A, S-22-02. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item that we are considering in this ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance granting the request of Mr. Robert C. Barclay the fourth of Cooper Spongen-Davis P.C. on behalf of the applicant, Tim Foley, for the closure of a paved alley between 545 High Street and 519 Washington Street. The applicant plans to combine the closed, the closure area with adjacent properties to facilitate the rehabilitation of the professional building. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for mixed-use corridor. The property is right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth, and Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. And the actual ordinance reads, "An ordinance to close an unnamed alley extending eastwardly from Washington Street approximately 90 feet and located between High and King Street."
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present? Ma'am, if you or your representative would come forward, please, state your name and address, and you will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Riley Seer. I'm on Cooper Spongen-Davis. Mr. Barclay cannot be here today, so I'm at 200 High Street.
Could you adjust your microphone, please?
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. I said, "Good evening. My name is Riley Seer. I'm with Cooper Spongen-Davis at, at 200 High Street, Suite 500. Mr. Barclay cannot be here this evening, so I'm acting in his place to represent Mr. Tim Foley in regard to the street closure." The Planning Commission gave their approval 7/0 upon conditions of which Mr. Foley is happy to comply with. Mr. Foley's goal is to convert the largely underutilized historic professional building at 545 High Street and restore the building to a multi-use modern structure. The bottom floor, there would be a commercial space, and then there would be 42 apartments on floors two to seven. The closure area right there is a paved alleyway. No other changes would be made. It wouldn't be affected by the renovations. And he has agreed to dedicate an easement for emergency access by the city for public safety purposes. So in order to facilitate the renovations, he wants to do a minor subdivision, in which case the, because he owns the two adjoining properties, in which case we need the street closure. If approved, he hopes, he hopes to close on the purchase by the end of the summer and then completes the restoration by fall 2023. It's also relevant to note, any renovations will fully comply with the downtown design and Virginia historic restoration requirements, and the planning staff has noted that the closure is consistent with and supports the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, Mr. Foley also recognizes the city's goal to increase small and disadvantaged business participation in any development in the area. He's met with a consultant to, and has had a plan formally drawn up in order to help implement and meet that goal. I've got copies of that plan if requested. He's willing to work with the city to provide any feedback, if that means, you know, have meetings with the city, providing reports, whatever. Mr. Foley's here, and he's willing to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so your new improvements would hinder a new emergency plan, I'll say that.
The new plans won't have any impact on the existing layout. It'll exist just as it is currently, and all emergency vehicles will be granted full and complete access at any given time.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
It's, it's for staff. How much is the land being transferred? What's the price of the land transfer?
That's a question for the city attorney's offices or handled by Mr. Miller.
Yes, what's the cost of the land transfer? How much is being paid for the land transfer? Because it's, it's city-owned land, is that correct? So what's the price that's being paid for the land?
Councilman Woodard, it's not city-owned.
Okay.
Mister, mister, sir, would you come forward, please, so we can, we can hear you for the record?
That's Jeff Miller, deputy city attorney.
Okay.
Just approach the microphone up.
And Councilman Whitaker, are you referring to the alleyway or the building itself?
The property that is being closed, the street, the alleyway.
The alleyway.
Yeah, so it says the property is right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth, so it's just a, a legal right.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you, Dr. Whitaker, I thought you were speaking of the professional building property itself, which is privately owned. What the city has for the alleyway is an easement, and by closure of the street, the easement evaporates, and so the alley becomes owned half by the owners on each side.
Okay, so that's not city, that alleyway isn't owned by the city.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Are there, are there any other questions from my colleagues? Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Riley and Mr. Foley. The presentation that you have here, is it going to continue to be a professional building or did I hear apartments?
Correct. So, the picture's actually pretty instructive for what I'm about to say, but all of the brick that you see above will all be converted into apartments. Currently, they used to be used for different city staff and a variety of reasons over, or causes or uses since 1928. The bottom will be all commercial, where you see the white, and currently the, it's boarded up a little bit and it's stuckoed, so all that, what you see in that photo, all the storefronts will be restored. It's 18 feet of glass. It's in big, open, airy, commercial space on the bottom. And on the top, it'll be 42 units.
Okay. And there are some conditions that the Planning Commission put in place. Are there any concerns for you with satisfying or meeting those conditions?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Foley. What are, what are the price points going to be on the apartments?
There'll be all-new construction. They'll be done to a very high level, but we're targeting market or just about below market. All the comps in the area with this 507 tower and I believe it's 521 King Street, they have one-bedroom apartments, but it's being underwritten at $1,400 a month, which is equivalent to those other ones, those other units around. In fact, it's a little bit lower, and we're providing a number of common space amenities, possibly a rooftop, if that's something that we're able to, to build into the plan as well. And of course, the commercial space on the bottom, which we think is going to be a nice community add as well. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you both. And, and this, thank you both. Do you have any more to say? Well, thank you both for your presentation.
Thanks, Mr..
This is a public hearing. You may be seated. This is a public hearing, so you do not, or you are not required to sign up in order to come forward and speak on this particular matter. Once again, if you come up forward to speak on this particular matter, you will have five minutes. You need to state your name and address, and you have to state your main to what the issue is on the public hearing. With that said, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this public Seeing none, it is closed. We do have a need for a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We've now come to item B, under public hearing. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item pertaining to this ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance granting the request of Ms. Erin Carter of 5222 Forestale Drive for a permanent street name change for a portion of McLean Street from Airline Boulevard to Greenwood Drive, from its current designation to the name of Missy Elliott Boulevard in recognition of Portsmouth native Melissa Arnett Elliott, an award-winning rapper, singer, songwriter, and producer best known by the stage name Missy Elliott. The future land use map of Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as transportation. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. The Planning Commission recommends approval, and the ordinance reads, "An ordinance to change the name of that portion of McLean Street between Airline Boulevard and Greenwood Drive to Missy Elliott Boulevard."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Would you please come forward? You will have 10 minutes to present your item, and please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members and City Manager, City Attorney. My name is Erin Carter and also Ms. Deborah White. Don't want to leave you out. My name is Erin Carter. I reside at 5222 Forestale Drive, and today I'm here to speak on the street name change application, as that was just stated in the ordinance, for Ms. Melissa Arnett Elliott, which we famously know as Missy Elliott, who is a world-renowned singer and artist who is right here from our hometown of Portsmouth, and we know that she graduated from Manor High School and is a very, very accomplished person. So today, I just wanted to talk about, you know, why this is needed in the city and why this is a good idea. First, I kind of want to deal with the business aspect, just because, you know, the city is a business, and to state that if, I don't know if the city still has the slides, but there is only one building that occupies on that street right now, which is, I believe, is the Bingo Hall, Old Town Mall Auditorium. I'm not sure what the use is for now. It's changed so many times, but when I was growing up, it was the Bingo Hall. That's the only building right now that's located, so there is, in the city's comprehensive plan, they are designating that, as you guys know, as the entertainment district, which will have whatever future development status it's supposed to be, and also, we know, the casino on one side. So, a lot, you know, some people got together and say, you know, we don't do a good job at recognizing our own heroes. That's right here from Portsmouth. A lot of times, as you all know, we suffer from kind of bad reputations or bad media items, and so this is one thing that, you know, growing up, I remember, you know, learning that this singer who's received all of these awards, performed at the White House, have gotten, you know, some of the same award as Michael Jackson and other singers. She grew up right here in our city of Portsmouth, and so children should have to look to another city to see, you know, greatness, because greatness resides in Portsmouth. Whether people want to believe it or not, it does, and it comes from Portsmouth. So this is just a true testament to what can come out of Portsmouth, and, you know, people that come here, they shouldn't have to look far, and this is not just, we have many other great people that came from Portsmouth, but this is just the start of recognizing our own. And I know some people say, "Well, she's not involved with Community Give Best," and, you know, I've seen the rhetoric on that, but just because her presence is not out there maybe passing off free hot dogs, she has been involved, as most people know, the Manor High School donation that she recently made back in 2019, but she also spoke to Manor High School staff and the school administration virtually when we did the name change from Woodrow Wilson to Manor High School, and she was so proud of the fact that the city had courage to make name changes like that. So this is one of ours. I will hope, I know her mom and her, they're actually watching this meeting, and I've been in contact with them, but we should do this to really show appreciation for one of our own and to show that Portsmouth, you know, we do have greatness coming from this city.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. I just had two questions. So the family and Missy Elliott, they have approved?
Yeah, they are, we're in there, they're with the yes.
All right. And, and all the, any particular reason, history, McLean Street?
Honestly, it was done after, like, meeting with city staff. You know, if you were to take another street, there would be a lot of changes that, you know, has to go in. They told me with deeds and all of that process, and, you know, not trying to make homeowners or business owners mad about having to go and deal with that, then people saying the city should pay for these changes with the post office and stuff. It was just kind of, that's the only section of a street that's still kind of somewhat underdeveloped, but we know in future years, it will be built up to do that. And then, this is only a portion of McLean, because I know there's some historical significance with that as well, but you still have majority of that street that goes, well, will be to my left, but goes further down back into the neighborhood as well.
Yeah, I was just curious if it was some connection with Missy Elliott.
No, 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 no. I mean, it will be more likely to do it at, right by Manor High School, but, you know, I think we'll have a bit discussion of, you know, changing deeds and all that land stuff.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for the presentation. I'm, I'm jealous that I didn't think of it, but thank you for bringing it to us. Missy Elliott has been a great, you know, rapper, actor, artist, and, and she does, deserves this recognition, and I think it's appropriate. When I had the conversation with you and your team, I had the same question about, you know, why wouldn't it be closer to the high school that, that I attended and she attended? I was a little bit ahead of her in my graduation year, but the McLean Street, where the entertainment district is gonna, would be an appropriate place for this, and I would think, and I would hope that if council approved this, that we follow up with a key to the city at some point at a future meeting or presentation as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
And I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Burke. I think it was very strategic to put it here in our entertainment district, even though it's not fully developed yet. This is just a, a attribute that can lure tourists to this particular site and also inform them that we do have great people like Missy Elliott that comes from this great city. So, you, I do think this is something that the council should approve, and once again, like I say, it's strategically placed in a place that will lure tourist dollars to this city, so.
Yeah. And I, if I could have just a quick comment, you know, I said in a planning commission meeting, you know, people are gonna, you know, as we know, we're gonna get visitors from North Carolina, even they just coming to be nosy about the new casino, and wouldn't it be something, you know, when you hear on the GPS, you know, turn left on Missy Elliott Boulevard? That's, that's not usual when you hear a GPS. I travel a lot, and, you know, for people, they're gonna ask the question, "Why is it named?" And they say, "She came from this city, not New York, not Atlanta, it's from Portsmouth." So, just a quick comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I'm for this name change, especially too often we recognize a lot of men and what they do. I think this is an opportunity to represent, recognize a, a award-winning artist from the city of Portsmouth who has also brought people on with her in this city, so I'm definitely for this change, and I'm looking forward to actually when we do, do the key to the city, that her coming here and also bringing other people here with her.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We do have a couple of speakers, so our first speaker on this item is Ms. Donna Si. Ms. Si, ma'am, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive, Chersland District 5. Agenda item 22-238B, SNC 22-01 is a public hearing on an ordinance granting the request of Ms. Erin Carter of 5222 Forestale Drive for a permanent street name change for a portion of McLean Street from Airline Boulevard to Greenwood Drive renamed Missy Elliott Boulevard. The request for name change of a street comes from someone who lives in Voting Precinct 35 in the Chersland District. The resident does not live in the area of McLean Street from Airline Boulevard to Greenwood Drive. Those areas include Voting Precinct 19, 20, and 21. Voting Precinct 19 is in the Craddock District. 20 and 21 voting precincts are in the Cavalier Manor District. Was the Craddock Civic League and the Cavalier Manor Civic League notified before this request went to the Planning Commission meeting? Woodard represents Craddock and Battle represents Cavalier Manor. Did both of these representatives contact the civic leagues to get the people's consent on this change of name for the McLean Street? In addition to the lack of communication with both of these civic leagues, another issue is the failure of the city to honor its history. What has Missy Elliott done to stop the gun violence in Portsmouth? What has she done to have the African-American Historical Society be moved into the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame? We have many unrecognized African-American heroes in our city. There are many who have sacrificed their lives and fortunes for all of us, and yet they haven't gotten a museum to honor their contribution through the city. The Public Works and General Services Department are understaffed, and yet the city wants to pass an ordinance with no communication with the people in the districts where the sign is supposed to be placed. Yes, that's the mentality of the new generation of thinkers. Go along to get along. It's a bit favoritism, no values.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker on this item is Mr. Steve Carroll. And sir, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm coming up here tonight with something I never have at this podium, and that's cold Not because of the item, but how I was gonna have to approach it. Music is a powerful tool. Every now and then, I sing at church. And it can be used to send a positive message, and it can be used to send a negative message. I have three pages of a song from Missy Elliott that I downloaded the other night. The name of it is "Work It." It's attributed to her, along with a number of songwriters here, something called "Music Match." Don't know if it is or not. I can only go by what I downloaded off of the internet. There's a saying that if you stand for nothing, you'll fall for anything. So I'm here to stand for family values tonight. I'm not here, I don't have a mandate from God to judge what other people do in the privacy of their own or what they say or think. However, this has now been put on the, the agenda, and now it becomes a city issue, and therefore it represents the city of Portsmouth, does it not? Does it not? Why I have cold feet? Because the language in this song is so crude and lewd, and I was going to repeat it tonight, three pages of it, and I'd made up my mind that I would not repeat some of the worst. But it is filled with sexual innuendo and repeated references to male and female genitalia and lewd sex acts, and therefore I refuse to repeat some of those words. And some of you know what I'm talking about. I don't know who Missy Elliott is. Never heard of her until Sunday night. Now, I'm old school. I came from the genre of the 50s and 60s. I like Motown. I like vocal groups. That's my personal preference. But again, now that this has been put on the agenda, council must consider that this represents the city. The point was made about a negative image. Is this the image that we want to portray to our youth? And we've been down this road before. I've been here over the same topic before. We have so many issues addressing this city right now that we need to tackle. This seems extremely petty for the financial issues that were brought up tonight, the project issues that were brought up tonight. I have nothing personally against Missy Elliott, and I don't know who she is, but I think this kind of language, this kind of message, now I can read it if you want me to. No, I don't, I didn't think you would. I think you need to consider that, please, and turn down this name change. Any questions for me?
Councilman Battle, and then Vice Mayor Barnes. Sir, you have the floor.
It's not uncommon for you to feel the way you do. I'm Ms. I'm as old as you are, possibly, or older. And I remember when Elvis Presley used to shake his hips and white, black, everybody said that was the most commonest thing ever to happen. I remember when Elvis said, bless my soul, what's wrong with me? I'm itching like a man on a fuzzy tree. Some friends think I'm wild as a buck, but I'm in love, I'm all shook up. And they thought that was atrocious. But we can't censor speech. And the beauty of things like this is if you don't like it, you don't have to listen to it. But she is an accomplished person and I, I just want to make you aware that it's not uncommon for you to feel like that and I understand it. And each generation does that. Oh, that's terrible because it's not the way we had it. And things change. And we have a thing called freedom of speech. And we can't censor the speech. But we do have the right to not listen to anything that we don't want to. But she is an accomplished person. She's, um, she's not in jail. She's contributing to society positively. And I'm, I'm gonna vote for this. But I just wanted to tell you, all the generations, as the jogging get a little more graphic, you get the same reaction. But the beauty is, we don't have to listen to it if we don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes.
Aside from the things that Councilman Battle said, he said some very important things, but she's also won some very prestigious awards, including the Nickelodeon Kids' Choice Award. She's won awards in Japan, Europe, Asia. She's won the Black Girl Rock Award. She was the first female hip-hop artist ever to receive the MTV Video Music Awards and so many other things. So, I think she's done a great job of representing the city of Portsmouth and also let females know, little girls, little black girls knowing the city of Portsmouth that they can come from here and do some of the same things.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm quite sure that many of us seen the Star Spangled Banner and you might wanna, you might wanna check out that third, third stanza of the Star Spangled Banner, which I know you would probably sing all four verses. And so, before we get too critical of that, I would advise, advise us to measure it a little more carefully.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other? So, once again, this is a public hearing and if you wish to speak about this particular matter, you can come forward. Your comments need to be germane to the issue. State your name and address and you will have five minutes.
My name is Catherine Howell. I live in Cavalier Manor. And I just wanted to kind of come up here and give a different perspective. We live in a predominantly black city of Portsmouth and Missy Elliott is an accomplished woman. And I don't know if you know this, but black, black women are four times more likely to die in childbirth. And I think that when white people look around and say, white guilt, and they feel that, and I kind of feel like that's what came out. And we can talk about, you know, the lyrics in rap, but that doesn't, that isn't germane to what's happening. And I think that, you know, the comments that were made before, you know, I find personally as a white person, I find that more offensive than Missy Elliott's lyrics. And I think that white people have a history in this country of doing truly awful things. And I think it's time that we admit that and we move forward because it's 2022 and a senator called to overturn Brown versus Board of Education. And I'm embarrassed to be a white person. I really am. Because it's 2022 and we need to change and we need to come forward. And if you have your personal beliefs, what you think is right or wrong, keep it to yourself. Religion, all that stuff. We need equality and we have to figure out how to get past this. But commenting about, you know, didn't she win so many awards and you want to talk about lyrics? Like, we don't need any more, like, wars of culture. Can we move on? It's 2022.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address and you will have five minutes.
My name is Melissa. I reside in the Carver Circle area of Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm also coming up here with a different perspective. I do agree that, uh, black women should be recognized, but the perspective that I'm coming from is that I feel like we should go in order of the recognition. And what I'm saying is that I feel like if we're going to honor any black woman coming from the city of Portsmouth, who has done great things, I feel like we should start with Ida Barber. I don't think a lot of people know who Ida Barber was or what she did for the city of Portsmouth. I think the only thing that people think about when they see Ida Barber is the housing projects that they tore down. But, um, Ida Barber, she was, um, she was born in 1878 in the city of Portsmouth. She was a part of the first black free community in the city of Portsmouth called Lincolnville. I don't even think people know anything about Lincolnville. That's where Mayor Harley was from when he, and he became the first black mayor of the city of Portsmouth. But Ida Barber went to the colored youth institution in Philadelphia and instead of just leaving and never returning, she came back and she gave to the city. She was a pillar in the community and not a lot is known about her. And I feel like, um, instead of just letting that history go to waste, I think it's important that we start in order. I do, however, agree that Missy Elliott has a lot of accomplishments, but I feel like if we're going to celebrate black women, I feel like we should start in order. And I feel like Ida Barber should be the first person that we name a street after. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just personal, on a personal note, both of our children, our son and our daughter, attended Miller Homing Day Nursery for childcare in the city of Portsmouth, which was the precursor to Ida Barber Early Learning Center. So, thank you for sharing that history. We appreciate it. Once again, this is a public hearing.
How y'all doing? My name is Brian from the Trucksden area. I'm actually here to talk from a different perspective, from a male perspective. Missy, female, black, has accomplished so much in this world, you know, with all the odds stacked against her, all the odds stacked against her being actually from here, from Portsmouth. Then itself, in itself is a very, very hard, you know, mountain to climb to get to where she is. I believe that this street should be named, I thought it'd show, you know, that it's an example for, I'm picking back off of everything, Mr. Barnes, Battle, I've said, Dr. Whitaker said, it needs to be an example, example for young, young black women. I have a daughter and she needs another example as well that she can make it from here. Perfect example, and again, it's a great idea for the entertainment district. Point blank period. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing, you will have five minutes if you state your name and address.
All righty. Conrad Chesrino, 3706 Greenway Court, East 23707. And sometimes decisions on council are gonna be hard, but sometimes decisions are gonna be easy. I believe this one is an easy one. Just as a point of fact, this is the second council I've addressed today, the other one being in Virginia Beach when they were appointing a new member. And if Virginia Beach wanted to rename a piece of Len Haven Parkway after Pharrell, I also wanted to see an issue with that. Much as a person may be wise to reach back to their hometown when they make it successful, it's often just as key for a city to publicly support their hometown hero. There will be more community improving policies to support later, and I call on council to support the community over city revenue interests when they come about, but support this one as it's simple and it's fun. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, you will have five minutes. Come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. I do have a couple of questions for planning, myself, just to ask. I have a couple of questions. I know previously we discussed about a street closure and we talked about honorary street names. And I just want to be clear because I know in our packet, we had some examples of an honorary street name. And for example, this one particularly is to Shaka Khan in Chicago and it has Shaka Khan's name, an honorary street name. I just want to make sure that I understand, this isn't an honorary street name, this is the full street name.
That is correct. And as you're aware, council has not adopted an honorary street naming policy yet, so we can't even bring an application for one yet.
Correct. Okay, I just wanted that to be clear, okay? And the other side of McLean, after Greenwood, will stay McLean?
It will. That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
That, uh, that honorary street name policy, it's been a long time coming. Hopefully, it'll arrive during my lifetime, anyway. You know, I, I was on council when a street name request came from Ruth Brown, actually. Ms. Brown was before my time, I started to say way before my time, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go back, I'd be fudging if I said way back. But, uh, you know, she accomplished a lot. In fact, Missy Elliott, as well as every performer before and after her, owe a debt to her because she, uh, she raised the issue of when music is played, her music, other artists' music is played in restaurants and on TV, they didn't get any money for it back then. So, she, uh, she raised that issue. And in fact, she was the catalyst for bringing it to the courts. And as a result, there's an organization called ASCAP. So, if you open a restaurant and start playing music, you'll, you'll get a visit from a representative from ASCAP and you will have to, there's a subscription or enrollment involved where you have to pay. And a portion of those proceeds nationwide go to the artists. Anyway, that's the sideline. I had a, I had a, a text message from a person that's well-known in the community and I won't mention her name, but she related a Missy Elliott story. She was, this lady was in church, I guess in the white service on New Year's Eve, and lo and behold, Missy Elliott was in church on New Year's Eve. Obviously, Missy Elliott could probably be anywhere she wanted to be on a New Year's Eve. But she was in church praying and this lady related that she, I think she had a conversation with her and, uh, apparently she knows her as well. But my point is, I don't know how Missy Elliott was when she sang the music. Obviously, she sings music to, to make money and people tend to, to change as they get older. And she has, uh, won many awards. Do I agree with all of her music? No, certainly. Her, her music is not the music of my generation. I'm still in the, the golden oldie music phase. But I'm, I'm gonna vote for this because I think, I think she, she has done a lot of good as well for young people, working for young people. And at this point in her life, I think she is a good role model. And so, I, I think she's deserving of this. So, I'll, I'll support this, just as I supported the renaming or the naming of Ruth Brown's street. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Would you call the roll? Wait, we need a motion in a second. I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item unfinished business 22-157. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution to acquire 320 Quebec Street Tax Parcel 0094 through 0910.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second.
Mr. Wood.
You don't have a chance to speak, sir. We just, we just gonna get the motion in a second on the floor. Then I will open the floor, okay? We have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I move, well, I ask that council would defer this. We have not heard our report back yet from the city assessor regarding the Sugar Hill property and the tax lien issues that occurred on that property. And I think before we do anything, any acts on this, that we wait for that report to come back. So, I would ask that we would defer it to our September meeting.
There, there's, there's a request on the floor to defer and Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. There's a, excuse me, a motion to approve by Mr. Moody and Mrs. Lucas Burke. If they would like to switch it to defer to the first meeting in September, they just need to let us know that.
I'll do that. Is the assessor in the audience?
Yes, sir.
I've, I've got a question for the assessor.
Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of council, how can I help you, sir?
Well, my question is, this came up before, what's, is there a holdup on, on giving us the information?
No, no, it's quite a task to take care of. Personally, if you have my opinion, we should go ahead and vote on the issue now. I have the information, I will be forthcoming with that later on in September, if that's okay.
Well.
Go, go ahead, Councilman Moody.
Well, the question now is, if you have the information, we don't and the public doesn't.
Right.
So, I, I would say at this point, I agree with my colleague, we'll, we'll defer it, but, uh, anyway, I, I don't realize why the information hasn't been distributed, but thank you.
So, you, Moody, you challenge your motion?
Yes.
And second. So, the current motion now is by Mr. Moody and second by Mrs. Lucas Burke to defer to the first meeting in September.
Yes, ma'am, to defer this matter into the first meeting in September.
Okay.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the city manager's report, item 22-239. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item? to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting American Rescue Funding Act funding in the amount of $28,421,282, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Grants Fund for use in accordance with the requirements of the act.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. And we do have a couple of registered speakers for this item, and the first speaker is Mr. Cedric Crado. Mr. Crado, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Cedric Crado, 725 Bow Street. Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, I don't see the chief of police. I came here today to speak about this ARPA fund. I see the 28 million, but it was an article last year, July 21st, and '21, and it stated that we were receiving 58 million, $56 million to the city, and I didn't know, are we using only half of that money to make it appropriation today, or are we going to talk about it later on? Because again, I'm trying to figure out, what are we going to use the 28 million dollars for? And one of the guys that I heard in the article was named Jim, I think his name was Ridge Bo, I guess he was an analyst, and he talked about direct household assistance, relief to small businesses and nonprofits, affordable housing development, bumping payout for essential workers, and major infrastructure projects. My question is, again, is CCTVs not included in infrastructure? With the current crime that is taking place in the city of Portsmouth, I still don't understand why we haven't addressed using closed-circuit TVs in high-crime areas. But I bet you, when that casino come, there'll be CCTVs all around that place. So again, I just want, this is, I'm searching for the information, because it's not out there. You guys can get a, you see lying items about where you're going to spend the money, but there's no lying album on who's going to get the money. And I think that that's not transparent, there's no transparency in that. Is ShotSpotter going to be a part of that money that's being paid for? Because again, I don't think ShotSpotter is good for our city. Why? Because we don't have enough police officers. And if you don't know, several people have been getting shot lately, and we ain't caught nobody. And recently, yeah, I think they caught a couple of people with the case in Churchland when the guy shot somebody in the bar, but the majority of the cases, they're not being solved. They got pictures of individuals, when they killed a young man out London Oaks, that has nothing to do with the city. When that young man got killed out in Seaboard, that has nothing to do with, the city of Portsmouth has something to do with the redevelopment housing authority, and I'm going to stay on course. The reason I said that is because that's why I think it's important that we use the infrastructure money or the ARPA money for CCTVs. Because again, if we don't have enough police officers, why not invest in that type of program? Because again, you may not understand me now, but in the near future, everything that happened in Portsmouth, I've told you already that it was going to happen. And with your ARPA money, if you don't use it accordingly, it's going to get worse. We cannot act like, just because we throwing around 28 million dollars to so many organizations that we don't know how to use it, you can't say that the people that come up here don't know what they talking about. We know what's going on. All I'm asking for is the information. So again, my question is, why haven't we discussed closed-circuit TVs in high-crime areas or in our lights? Because I seen in the work session, you guys said something about improving the lighting, but we need this stuff, or the crime rate is going to increase. I'm telling you, not because I think, it's because I know, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Churchland District 5. Agenda item 22-239 is an ordinance accepting American Rescue Plan Act funding for over 28 million dollars to address general government revenue loss due to COVID-19, to perform necessary and eligible infrastructure improvements such as water and sewer infrastructure, and perform broadband projects for underserved households and businesses. This is the second round of ARPA funding, which the city management will engage in a process of presentation and discussions with city council. So let we, the people, have a discussion with his or her representative sitting up there on city council, who is included in the divisions of the general government and the budget book that will be getting money. In the budget book, page 144, under Public Works, the total amount of expenditures for the Public Works Department budget is over 90 million dollars. In this department, there is no administration division, so no one is going to oversee how this department is managed. Why not? The total ARPA funding for the Public Works Department will be over 11 million dollars. The breakdown of the ARPA funding, the Stormwater Management Division Fund allotment of ARPA funds is over 2 million dollars. The Engineering Division allotment of ARPA funds is over 4 and 1/2 million dollars. The Traffic Engineering Division allotment of ARPA funds is 450,000 dollars. The Public Utilities Division allotment of ARPA funds is over 4.6 million dollars. The ARPA funding total under Public Works is 11,742,750 of the ARPA fund of over 28 million dollars. This leaves over 16 million dollars to be spent elsewhere. In the budget book, page 190, under the General Services Department budget, the total amount of expenditures is over 31,600,000 dollars. The total amount of ARPA funding is 3,700,000, 3,700,000 dollars. The expenditures noted in the department is administration, 400,000 dollars, property management, over 6 million dollars, real estate rental, 775,000 dollars, utilities, over 2.8 million dollars, waste management fund, over 10 million dollars, vehicle services, 11,230,354 dollars. With the 3,700,000 dollars, ARPA funds being allotted to this division, how come the ARPA funds of 3,700,000 dollars is put in the vehicle services division? Subtracting 3.7 million dollars from 16, over 16 million, leaves over 12 million dollars to be spent elsewhere. How is the 15 million of past due utility bills going to get paid? Remember that agenda item? Is the Public Works Department and the General Services Department, there is one duplicate division in both the Public Works and General Services, and that is utilities expense. Public Works is over 59 million, General Services over 2 million. So payout of the utility fund is over 54 million. That leaves over 4,600,000 dollars in the hole. There's a lot of questions to be answered on how the city is spending the taxpayers' money. There is over 12 million dollars left to be spent elsewhere. So how is the city council going to address general government revenue loss due to COVID-19 to perform necessary and eligible infrastructure improvements such as water and sewers, infrastructure, and perform broadband projects for underserved households and businesses? Just a reminder, how come 3.7 million dollars is going to vehicle service fund? This is not water and sewers infrastructure fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any additional questions amongst my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item 22-240, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting grant funds in the amount of 471,984 dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Grants Fund budget for the purpose of funding six full-time school resource officers from the sheriff's office.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have one registered speaker for this item, Mr. Steve Carroll. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Evening again. I have mainly questions, and I'm sure that those questions can be addressed by a little bit of information. Six resource officers that are going to be funded with 471 million, or 471,000 dollars. It comes out to about 78,500 dollars a year per resource officer. Are these going to be LEOs, or are they going to be hall monitors? Now, why does that make a difference? It makes a huge difference. As was demonstrated very sadly in Texas and Florida, what happens when we have school security that is undertrained, poorly led, and not given clear rules of engagement? What happens? People die. And these people, in my opinion, need to be LEOs. Are they going to be LEOs? Law enforcement, fully certified law enforcement officers capable of making arrests, interdicting in a trauma situation, interdicting in an armed intrusion into our schools? And if they're not, this is a prodigious amount of money to be wasting on that. Now, I'm not underestimating the value of resource officers, not at all, I'm making the point. But those questions need to be addressed, please. All right, is this being fully funded by this grant? Or is there matching funds that we're required to put up? Is it fully funded? I would like to think that they are going to be LEOs. If not, that's a big problem, because that allows us the flexibility to use these officers elsewhere if necessary. And it will ensure that they get the proper training that they need. If they're not going to be LEOs, what is their job description? Even if they are LEOs, what are they going to be doing there? If they're going to be simply hall monitors observing and watching, we can certainly put people in there for less money and use these scarce funds to put more sworn officers on the street, and that's where they're needed. Just for example, and it's not totally related, but it's something to think about. There were 108,000 drug overdoses in this country last year. Forty percent of those were fentanyl. We got drugs in this city, and we have a drug problem in this city, and it's probably the biggest cause of our crime. We need boots on the ground. So I would like to think that my questions will get answered, and you can ease my fears by answering those questions tonight.
Madam Manager, would you care to address at least a question on the background of those individuals, please?
Yes, sir. So the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office, officer deputies that are assigned to SRO position will be required to be fully DCJS approved, received, approved SRO training as well as the basic law enforcement training, so they will be fully certified.
LEOs?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know if you're aware of this or not, there was a riot at Churchland High School a number of years ago. It required 14 sheriff's deputies to quell it, and they were disrespected, they were cursed at. We got a problem with honoring our law enforcement in this city. And on a side note, you didn't lose your police officers because of money, but you're going to have a heck of a time filling their shoes because you don't have the money. And that loss of officers was lack of respect. But good, thank you, I appreciate that. Now, what about their job duties? What is their, what are their instructions?
Do you want me to?
Because that's part of the problem.
I think you can provide that information to?
And I'm not asking for confidential information, please, and no, I understand the sensitivity of that.
Sure.
It will be handled by the sheriff's department, so that's the best person to ask that.
They're not just going to be hall monitors?
Their duties are outlined, but you would need to speak to the sheriff, because he controls them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, it looked like you had your hand up, sir?
Oh, I didn't ask, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, I just want to make sure I'm acknowledging everyone. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, then we have a motion in a second? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-241, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of 173,763 dollars from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court for the Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court Program.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second?
Move for approval.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Item 22-242, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting a reimbursement grant in the amount of 23,067.40 from the Virginia 911 Service Board via the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Information Technology to support the transition to ESI NET 911 service.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional question amongst my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Item 22-243, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, a resolution agreeing to a master lease agreement with the Southside Network Authority to occupy Portsmouth right of way.
Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion amongst council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to new business, item 22-244. And Vice Mayor Barnes, Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward?
Yes, we have one appointment, but to three different boards. Appointment for our new Director of Social Services, Deanna Valentine, to be appointed to the Community Policy and Management Team, the Community Criminal Justice Board, and Todd Water Youth Service Commission.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We've now come to item 22-245. And council members, do you have any items to submit? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. This is for the City Manager. In our previous public work session, there was a discussion on a disparity study, and it was mentioned that the data on subcontractors is probably not being collected by the city as recommended by the previous disparity study. If it's, okay, in the assistance of council, if we could get that report back on whether that is true or not, that that data is or is not being collected. And if not, why?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Battle, did you have your hand up, sir? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm acknowledging you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. This is for the City Manager as well. I just wanted to see, could we get an update on our visitor center that's located on the waterfront to see, did we have any comprehensive plans for them? Or what is the future use for that particular site?
Yes, sir. Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional items submitted? Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I have two things. This past week, I spoke with the Firefighters Association President regarding the, them actually cutting their own grass at their departments. Is that something that we can move to our staff to do? Because going, being that they're kind of also short-staffed and also have to, you know, go to emergencies and things of that nature, it's kind of more job, more on them to do instead of actually cutting the grass for their particular facilities. I would like to see us actually take on that so that they can focus on getting the rest that they need to go out to these fires and/or go out to these particular situations to take care of those without having to worry about that as well.
We were certainly looking to it. Can you all speak to that at all? We'll look into it.
All right, also, my last thing. I just want to give a shout out to another hometown hero, Dorian Finney Smith, for the weekend that he had. He had a kickball tournament. Also, he bought the owner of the Dallas Maverick here. And also just had a basketball camp for our city. So I want to congratulate him from there and give him a shout out and that family because they've done a lot in the community of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that recognition. Also, I do want to take a moment to remind everybody that on this last Saturday, the United States Coast Guard celebrated their 232nd birthday. And we are a Coast Guard city, and I want to thank Councilman Moody, and I know Councilman Woodard was on the list to be there as well, for showing up for our Coast Guard city. And it meant a lot, it meant a lot to that organization, those Coast Guardsmen and women whose motto is Semper Peratus, always ready. And so they're always ready to help us, and we appreciate the fact that they're here in the city of Portsmouth. And I just wanted to give them recognition. Do we have any Coast Guardsmen or women in the audience, retired or active? Could you stand up, sir? Thank you for your service. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add that it had been brought to my attention. I did mention that should we, after we approved the street naming for Missy Elliott, that we would do a key to the city. Want to also add that for Dorian Finley, that we also add him as getting or receiving a key to our city. We have these superstars who are doing great things in our community, and that's a small recognition that we could do to honor them and to show that we appreciate the work that they are doing and giving back to our city.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to borrow Ms. Santos's line that doing what we've always done is not enough. It's not working. I'm going to apply that to the mosquito problem near Crane Island in the Churchland area. What we're doing, it's appreciated, but we've got to ramp that up. We had soccer teams that had to counsel practice this week on account of the mosquito problem. And it, this past weekend was a lost weekend from the summer for anybody that lived probably within a three-mile radius of Crane Island. So I know it was on the work session to discuss it, and unfortunately, we ran out of time. But I just want to let you know that had a lot of calls. I'm sure some of my colleagues did as well, that we need to increase the battle on the mosquito war in that area. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I agree with my colleague on that one. I did receive some calls, but also my son came home with 50 mosquito bites from Churchland football practice. So I'd definitely like to see us increase what we're doing on that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
Sorry, sir.
No, you're fine.
The director's here. If he wants, he would like to speak to the mosquito issue.
Sir, could you please come forward to the microphone? If you could state your name so we can all know who to come after.
My mosquito guy just left. Mr. Tim Dubois, he's our mosquito professional for the city. My name is Will Morris. I'm the interim director for Public Works. Obviously, yes, we know the mosquitoes are an issue. We had a really good presentation to present you guys tonight. You fine folks, and it's very comprehensive. It's had an educational portion of it. It's really easy to say, yeah, let's just go spray all the time. There's a lot of science behind it. Good news is, we're spraying tonight. Our folks are out there spraying right now, and we will continue to spray. We work very hand-in-hand with Army Corps Engineers and U.S. Air Force, so hopefully get some more planes flying. We're doing the very best we can, I can assure you of that. The presentation that we had will answer a lot of your questions, to be quite honest with you. It's unfortunate we ran out of time, but we certainly look forward to presenting that very shortly.
Madam City Manager, and thank you, sir, for coming forward and speaking.
And our mosquito hotline is open. We take all concerns and complaints very seriously. We, you know, we tally them. There's a lot of data and a lot of science behind what we do. It's actually very interesting, but we're aware, we're trying very hard. We're, I live in Churchland, so.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there any way that, I know we weren't able to go through the proposal, but is there any way that we could send out the information to all my colleagues on council?
Send the box.
Right, right. But, yes, ma'am. So it's in the box. Everybody can get it in the box. So if we could all just adhere to that and get the information, I think it will help us all to be better informed.
Is it posted online on our website?
Thank you all. I don't know why I asked that question, Madam Clerk. Thank you. City Manager Chapman, do you have any additional items? Or any pending items?
No, sir. I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item 22-247, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, before we call up our first non-agenda speaker, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our first non-agenda speaker is Zon Nordland? Zon Nordland? Okay. Our next speaker is Mr. Charles Monroe. Charles Monroe. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council members. Charles Monroe, 215 Charles Avenue, Portsmouth. In September, it will be 60 years since 1962. Thirteen students were selected to integrate Portsmouth Public Schools. I would like the members to, let's say, recognize these individuals one day and not let this be forgotten. If there's any research that you would like for me to do, let me know, and I will do all I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. And if you could.
Yes, sir.
Wait until the end of the meeting so we can get some information from you.
Okay.
Okay, sir?
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, sir. Please state your name and address, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm City Council Cedric Cradle, 725 Bow Street. Again, I come in half of my organization on seeing tears. First of all, I'd like to thank the new city manager for coming out. And also, I don't see, I don't see Chief Jenkins. He's here. Oh, yeah, I think he's here. I think you've got, the mothers wanted me to thank you again for coming out and listening to their pleas. Also, I want to thank Crystal Wood for coming out to the National Night Out and speaking with the mothers. That was very instrumental to them. They actually thought you were sincere. And that being said, we still have a lot of issues that we haven't addressed, to me. I, again, I'm for closed-circuit TVs in our communities because, again, school is about to start. And I don't know if y'all remember, there was a young man killed getting off the school bus. His mother's name is Nidra. And there's a gang issue, people. And we can play around and act like we don't, you know, we can put things in perspective and putting these other things in place. But this stuff is going to knock on some of you guys' door, some of your families' door after I read this list. You know, my organization, we keep up with all the deaths in the city of Portsmouth. I know it sounds crazy to some, but it's normal to us because we keep adding mothers and we keep adding families. And if I'm not mistaken, I hadn't been here in a month, and I think I added six families, six more families. And it's serious. That's why I'm always going to keep coming up here advocating for the police department, the officers, and also public safety, and also closed-circuit TVs. Because, again, that young man who got killed in that housing complex, the murder was on closed-circuit TV. So I don't know what the police department, I don't know if they're sharing information, but that crime is still unsolved. So, again, this, we're here for the voiceless. We're here to speak to the, speak for the voiceless because they can't speak anymore. And some of the mothers, they're so, you know, they're so out of it sometimes that they don't have the courage to speak. And I know it's offensive to some council people because of some of the things they've said. And, again, if you guys don't believe it, it's, some of you guys, some of you council people are insensitive as all outdoors. And I would hate to put somebody's business out there in the street. But, again, I'm not going to do that because, again, with the new city manager coming on, I think that the city is going in the right direction. But you know, they're going to give you a chance. But that being said, I always got to come up here and say, and speak the names of the victims that has continued to grow in our city. Charles Mosley, Corey Turri, Emmanuel Turri, Jeff Bazemore Jr., Jaquan Johnson, Carlton Dodd, Tashik Wolf, Anthony Skeeter, Raekwon Morgan, Tasia Hicks, Jamal, Jamil Howard, Darian Granger, Amaja Lee, Demond Mitchell, Lakeisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Josh Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Novia, Yashim Kerewake, James Heer, Dante Collins, Robert Otis, Malcolm Haskins, Javon Williams, Kamadre Howard, Quan Epps, Omar Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Tim Shine, Brian Williams, Maquell, Curtis Walton, Carrie Thomas, William Selfridge, Carlton Baines, Mantonia Bunch, Curtis Richardson, Andre Hall, Kiara Victoria, Victor, Jordan David, Branch Lawrence, I mean, Lawrence Kofa, Crystal Jacobs, Derek Parker, Demetrius Wright, Boobie Staten, Malani Everett, Mari Collins, Andre Bethia, Kareen Bache, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jamon Mitchell, Keith Warren, Waikong Gray, Dion Lawson Jr., who was only one years old, Giorgio Devonte Lee, Alicia Diana Mears, Ashley Merricks, Robert Parker, Daylon Spence, Trans A. Johnson, Devon Crosby, Terrell Jones, Aria McLaren, Xavier O'Hill, Kamadre Jenkins, John Plama III, Dante Ballam, Bernard Clack, and Keith Warren. And Bernard Clack just recently got killed last week. We went and spoke to the family. And, again, it's just heartening that there's still nothing in place, and none of the, you know, none of the current city leaders are reaching out to these families. How do I know? Because I talked to them mostly through the week. And it's a sad situation. So when y'all getting excited about this casino, crime is still occurring right under your feet. And just because nobody's murdered, what about the people that are being shocked that it's not getting it? The, can I finish, ma'am?
Absolutely.
Thank you. What about the people that are being shocked that's not being reported like the murders? So, again, people, again, I come up here with passion, not anger. We come up here to help, not hinder. Again, thanks, thank again the city manager and Chief Prince because I believe that we're moving in the right direction. But, again, we are for closed-circuit TV in high-crime areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you. I just want to commend our city manager and Chief Jenkins. I think this was in conjunction with the Rock the Block event they had. They were giving out ring cameras. And that's something that can help deter and capture some incidents that may happen, happening in your neighborhood. So, you know, I just want to make sure that I give their, you know, give them some accolades for what they are doing with that project. But I also have a question for Ms. Terry. I know with the additional request, was some of the equipment issues that, or some of the equipment that we are talking about, or Mr. Cradle, or some of the council members, is that included within this proposal?
It's not closed-circuit TVs because there's an opinion in your documents from the city attorney, whether it's Fourth Amendment rights and First Amendment rights. But it is to enhance, whether it's ShotSpotter and cameras, and utilizing the cameras that we currently have in the city. All those software products would help us increase our camera capability throughout the city. So, yes, those, that is included in that public safety area where we said additional consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Sya. Ma'am, if you come forward, state your name, address. You will have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Donna Sya, and I live at three-one-zero-four Garland Drive, Churchland District Five. Non-agenda item, lack of communication structure in the city. Does anyone on City Council read the vision principles and the guiding principles that were adopted on February the twenty-sixth, 2019? The guiding principles are compact for leadership. Focus on respectful communication. Speak with one voice. Share information. No surprises. Lead by example. Commit to teamwork. Zero tolerance for disrespect. Respectful communication. How can that happen? Look at the original municipal organizational chart of the city. What does one see? Number one, there are two deputy city managers that are in a conflict of interest because they are both department heads. Both can give their departments money without any accountability. The original municipal organizational chart of the city expanded. I had it expanded to see how the communication is not flowing. Look at the first column as an example of the other three columns. The column has the title Deputy City Manager, who is also the Planning Department Director. Underneath his direction are the Public Works Director, Parks and Recreation Director, and two divisions of the Community and Economic Development, which are the Permits and Inspection and the Planning Director. The second column has the title Deputy City Manager and the Chief Financial Officer. This is the second conflict of interest demonstrated. The third column doesn't have a deputy city manager. The fourth column is under the city manager. There is the Economic Development Department Director, the Safety Department Fire Chief and Police Chief, and the General Government Division Human Resource Director. There is no communication from the citizens to the elected legislative officers. Then there is no communication from the elected to the people regarding the people's needs. The original municipal organizational chart does not have boards and commissions attached to the departments. The original municipal organizational chart of the city, the liaisons aren't given a report on what happened at the meeting. They are liaisons, too. The agenda says boards and commission, roll call, vote. Each elected legislator is supposed to represent the people in each one of his or her districts to have issues brought to the work session. For example, did the Harvard Bloomberg Initiative come to the people? Did the people say what he or she needed in his or her neighborhood that ARPA funds could be used for? What about the disparity study? Did some citizens say he or she was passed over for a job in Portsmouth? What about the ditch cleaning and street sweeping? Did the residents ask how their church members could work with the middle and high school students to get together to help clean up the street gutters? Lack of communication is a cost that is not only causing excessive spending, but also lack of building relationships and preventing all kinds of violence in Portsmouth. One person is making an effort to divide the city by controlling all the revenue instead of looking at how to stop the excessive spending in our label poverty city and highest gun violence city in the state. The reason is, no one wants to have our city organized for communication. The elected are all about spending the people's money without his or her consent and refuse to put in place a communication line for the people to have a voice and the ability to self-govern.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Barry Randall.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council.
Good evening, Mr. President.
And Madam Manager. Good evening, Barry Randall from the Brighton Prentice Park section of the city. I'm here with good news tonight, so y'all can breathe a little easy. We are here to say thank you from the Brighton Prentice Park section, where I serve as the president. Specifically, I always call her Chief Chapman, but City Manager Chapman, she's actually started in the Brighton Prentice Park section as the litmus test for her Rock the Block, Share If You Care. I like that lingo. With her initiative, I know it rained, and there was a lot of people. And by the time I got there, there was a lot of people there. I'm thankful for all of you all that came out that day. And leading up to that, the mayor, Chief Chapman, I believe, Nika, two other individuals from the Behavioral Health and myself. We did a ride-along in Prentice Park in the Brighton section. I showed them the areas where we really need to really clean up. And then Chief Chapman and myself, we sat down and had another meeting after that. And I just shared with her, you know, her win for this city is our win. Her loss is our loss. So we are looking to work with her for great things in the city of Portsmouth, and we're excited. Also, Mayor, looking to get with you to help us with the initiative for the garden, the playground area, and the resource center because Prentice Park does not have a playground area. I don't know how many of you all on council know that. Brighton has a playground area, but our other area does not have one playground area at all. Erin Carter and her mother is going to be helping with that initiative, and we're going to allow the mayor with all his resources to also help us with that and our director from Parks and Rec. So we need all hands on deck with that. So I talked with Mr. Peter. I think the new date will be the eighteenth at six o'clock. That's next Thursday. We're asking everyone to come and join us as we walk the community of Prentice Place and Prentice Plot just to see the needs of the community and then so that you all can actually see what we face out there in the Prentice Park section of the city. And I'm hopeful that as many of you all that showed up in the rain will show up again in the sunshine. All right? Before I go, Mr. Mayor, and take my seat, if you will allow me to apologize to one particular council member. And I wouldn't even thought to apologize to Mr. Woodard had it not been for a conversation that he had with a particular senator. And I think he should know, but I understand he's new to this, being on council. But no conversation happens in the city of Portsmouth without Barry Randall always knowing about it. But I, you know, my grandmother taught me coming up, you know, if you make a wrong, you fix it. And wherever you wrong it, you fix it where you wrong it. And most people know me for not telling lies. But every now and then, I make a mistake. And I think I said it from this dais, or probably said it from sitting back there in the seat. And I said to Mr. Woodard, and I do want to apologize to him, and I said to Mr. Woodard that he would be the shortest elected official in the state of Virginia. And that is incorrect. David Nygaard in Virginia Beach was the first shortest elected official. So, Mr. Woodard, I apologize. You would be the second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional business for us to discuss as a body? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Stay safe and healthy.